I'd like to call the Board meeting to order. It is about 6:35. 6:37 precise. So, I'd like everyone to take a moment to review the agenda.
You don't know what that is.
What are you doing?
Ah.
You could just turn that one off.
There you go. Solved the problem.
All right. Any changes or additions to the agenda? I'd like to add one item toward the end to just do a meeting check-in, see how the meeting went, slash agenda call for the next meeting. I'll put that right before the entry to executive session.
Sure.
What do you want me to say?
I'm just adding a minor agenda point, so don't worry about it. The other thing I'm looking for is, I see from reading the minutes, the Vice Chair has volunteered to be timekeeper. It's what I get for not attending the last meeting, but for this meeting, I'd like volunteer timekeepers. Kristen, so help keep us on time, please. And with that, next is to approve the minutes. Take a moment hopefully to review the minutes from last meeting, and then I'd like to take a motion when you're ready.
Did you see what we did today?
There's a typo on page four. I have a monthly update.
Sorry.
Under A.
Page four?
Yeah. Four. Reimbursement for PUR, Marlborough. Could be a typo.
Oh. Oh. I think it's going to be hour.
Oh, okay.
I move to approve the minutes.
Do you have a second? Chris has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All abstain because I wasn't at the meeting?
Abstain.
Chris is abstaining?
Abstain.
Jill is abstaining?
Jill, Roger, and Chris.
Jill, Roger, Chris abstain. Motion passes. Public comment? Oh, before we get to public comments, this meeting is being videotaped, and we will be going into executive session to discuss litigation strategies and can consider the purchase and lease of real property because neither of those are, we will be discussing those in executive session because it would be not in our interest to discuss in open session, and we will not be returning to open session afterwards. Seeing that we have no public comment, we will move on to the faculty representative.
All right. Great. All right. So, teachers returned to school yesterday, and new teachers returned or came for the first time on Tuesday, so where they had some mentor training and just some overview of life as a teacher at AMSA. So, yesterday, we had a speaker come in to talk about universal design for learning, which is like a pedagogical theory or like a theory of instruction with that stresses a lot of student choice and kind of putting learning in the hands of students. And this is something that a lot of teachers were, who have been through various undergraduate and graduate courses, are really familiar with. And so, some of the ideas for other teachers were a little newer, and unfortunately, a lot of teachers did find that it wasn't as helpful as kind of we were hoping it would be. There was a lot of repetition of the same ideas, both that people were already familiar with and just within the presentation itself, and there was definitely a lack of suggestions for practical application. And a lot of teachers said that, you know, the ideas were kind of sparked by hearing what the speaker was talking about, but wished that they had had time to talk and explore how you actually put these ideas and these theories into action in the classroom. So, that was a little frustrating to spend the full day of PD on that, but there again, there were some teachers who, again, the ideas were flowing from it, so I think there were some concepts and discussions that did come from it, so it wasn't a complete waste, which is always good. And then today, we had more of an overview of policies, discipline, kind of field trip and club things that we have to deal with throughout the year. We had EpiPen training as well, so just kind of getting ready again for the kids to come on Monday, it's the day for the sixth graders, and then Tuesday is when all the other students return. And then tomorrow, we have a lot more time within our classrooms. So, overall, teachers have kind of desired more time to themselves to work in classrooms and on curriculum and that kind of thing, but today, again, was very kind of fast-paced and got a lot of the things that we need to get done, done, which is good. So, I do have a little bit of a longer update, or one I guess that makes or requires a little bit more explanation, because I had a teacher come to me today and said that they had been talking with like fairly large group of teachers, about 20 or 25, who he felt shared the same concerns over just kind of the direction of, and the conversations, the direction that conversations have been going in over the past year or so. And so, I'm going to read part of what was compiled and summarize other parts of it as well, the suggestion of this person. So, they said, "So, many of we faculty, from veterans to those with but a year behind us, are excited about returning to school this year. The hard work of Anders and Ellen and the board in restoring civility and health to the civil life of AMSA has been simply wonderful. With a new contract as a concrete symbol of how AMSA can heal, we look forward to a future where this achieved mutual respect between the administration and the faculty sticks as a lasting feature. With the mission statement as a symbol of how AMSA's community can heal, we look forward to a future where family and faculty and school leadership can focus on sustaining and improving the remarkable educational opportunity that AMSA offers its students." Because of this focus on healing, there's a concern that some other issues have been lost, or have lost attention that they deserve, particularly around retention of high-performing students who have felt that they would like to go to a different school because some of their interests aren't being met here, and also stay in, kind of in relation to that, staying true to the mission and the vision of AMSA about being this really unique educational institution. So, over the next year, though, this group of the faculty hopes to see the school refocus on cultivating the joy of learning amongst students, so focusing on, you know, extracurriculars that are very academically focused, events like an Olympiad or different competitions that our students can compete in to show this joy of learning and this exploration, and really the discovery of content that has made our school so unique for so long. And there's a slight, or there's definitely a fear that some of the faculty have that with the, that by focusing on perhaps more of the, too much on some of the whole child issues that have come up, that there's a danger at play of the soft bigotry of low expectations, and so at the expense of sufficient rigor and commitment to strengthening our students, which lie at the heart of the very mission of the school. Genuine understanding and the mastery of critical analysis can only be realized through passionate engagement with academic substance." And that's kind of the conclusion of that. So, really just kind of voicing some concerns that have been brewing, and nothing, you know, really, there's not like any one concrete thing that kind of has sparked this, but just kind of a concern that because we're at a place where, you know, trust and morale are, you know, really, I would say, an all-time high compared to the past few years, that, you know, some people are anxious that, you know, we might lose sight of, again, that academic strength that AMSA has been an exemplar of for so long, just in, you know, in light of some conversations that have happened. So, yeah, so that's that. And then again, looking ahead, we have our students coming back next week, which is very exciting, a little scary just because it's so soon, but I hope they'll be well, and we're, yeah, we're ready to welcome them back on Monday and Tuesday.
Thank you. Thank you, Brianna. Any questions for Brianna? Jill?
Were they looking for a response?
No, just some concerns they wanted to raise and just, yeah, make everyone aware of.
So, do you know how that concern relates to one of my big three out of the survey results with the philosophical divide among the staff?
Yeah.
Is that what we're talking about?
Definitely. Yeah.
And what's the other side?
So, Dr. Lewis and I were just talking about this. So, there's, I guess to put it simply, there's definitely a group that feels very strongly about, you know, the strong content we have, you know, in a lot of cases, some of kind of the more college-level material that students get to study, you know, in our upper classes, especially some of our really high electives in the different departments, and, you know, committing time and energy and resources to that and maintaining all of that, and then potentially taking time away from that for focusing on whole-child issues. And the big question has been, how do you do both? And I think for so long, we've been a school that is very proud of that strong content that we've had, or that we do have, and that, you know, a lot of conversations that have come up recently around, well, maybe we need to do more on, you know, stress management with students, and maybe we need to spend time on teaching study skills more directly, not just hoping that they kind of pick it up from their peers or like within classes. Naturally, we can't extend the school to do that, so I think a valid concern or valid question that people have is, where is that time going to come from? Are we going to cut out a class? Are we going to, you know, shorten classes so that we can make a new period for some of these things on like a consistent basis? You know, it's just, it's kind of the unknown, basically.
So, is enough of it the time spent on what, social-emotional study skills?
Yeah.
Immediate?
Yeah, pretty much, because I think there's a concern that with, you know, having those conversations obviously takes time. So, for example, we had the Wellness Day last year, which was a half-day. So, you know, I think a lot of people, you know, one day is one day, but I think there's a concern that, you know, is this something we're going to do on a weekly basis or a monthly basis where you're losing more time? You know, one half-day, you know, you can adjust for that, but if it's something that, you know, could take more time, I think, again, there's that question of what, where the time's going to come from, basically. And resources too, you know, are we potentially, are we going to invest in like a curriculum? Or if we are, does that come at the expense of not investing in something else? So, a lot of it's all very hypothetical and kind of just the unknown, but I definitely see where the concern comes from, because I think it's, again, it's all valid points that people are raising.
It's all a balance, though, right? I mean, it's a bit catastrophizing to think that Wellness Day is going to happen once a week. That's just, you know.
Or even once a month.
Or even once a month, exactly. I mean, I just, I can't see in any scenario where that can even possibly happen. You know, there's always going to be this tension, so it's sort of like right around the edges, probably.
And I think, how do we get to a point where the two are not mutually exclusive? I mean, that's, I think, the bigger challenge. I think that we need to keep the academic rigor, but not at the expense of, you know, other issues, so it's.
Is it really about time, or is it underneath that about, we're the, we're the school for the kids who can make it, not for the kids who need help making it?
As Brianna was saying, we were talking, we just talked a lot about this. I think, you know, there's a long level of mistrust between administration and staff, which is going away, which is great, and hopefully, we continue to make progress, and I think if we make progress on this one issue, that'll be the real, the real key. I think it's fair to say that for many years before this past year, ELL, Special Education, was really kind of not prioritized, right? But most certainly, Ellen and I did prioritize that, and we emphasized that, and we talked about that, and we said, you know, this is what we need to do, right? Those are our obligations, those are our legal obligations, those are our moral obligations. It's in our charter that we educate every child, and certainly, there's lots of emphasis on that, and I think a takeaway that a teacher might get from that is that, well, jeez, they talk a lot about special education, they always talk about the high academic standards. I totally get that. So, the key is to find that balance between we want and we fervently believe, and I hope I've emphasized in every report that I've given, that rigor, that standard, that we will never give in to the soft bigotry of low expectations, with the belief that we do need programs, ELL programs, special education programs, to help each and every kid, and that, as Sliz was saying, there really isn't. I don't believe there's any conflict between a person who believes in the whole child and a person who believes in high rigorous academic content. I believe in high rigorous academic content. I've always believed that. Every summer year I've taught, I also believe it is so fundamentally important to emotionally, socially connect with a student, and the two go together like peas in a pod. You can't have one without the other. And I was telling Brianna, when I talk with folks from the academic cabinet, and we sit down and have a heart-to-heart conversation, and I'll say, "Well, when a student's in your classroom, do you want them to feel a sense of respect and care?" Absolutely. "When a student is in your classroom, do you hope that they have a balanced life?" And if I talk to a person who comes from the whole child, and I'll say, you know, "Do you believe kids should be academically challenged? Do you believe kids should receive tough grades and have to work hard?" Absolutely. It's like two ships passing in the night that.
Violently in agreement.
Yeah. They really do have agreement, and the magic, the magic, and I think this is a real big project for us this year, is to try to come together and to get, polling a long time ago said something like a thousand boats.
Canoes.
A thousand canoes, and getting to come down the same stream. It's not easy, and it's hard, and it's going to take some difficult conversations, but I believe it's possible. With the folks that Brianna's mentioned, we already talked about some things that we could do, you know, meetings, I don't want to like.
Oh, go ahead.
You know, last year, we had a whole-child panel, and we took that very seriously. I had a list of recommendations, and so Brianna and I were brainstorming, why not have like a, whatever you want to call it, you know, academic rigor standard committee, and have the folks come together? You know, we have to have some agreement about, you know, we will have special education, we will have ELL. I mean, there's things that do need to be emphasized, we do need to stick to the charter, but given those parameters, what are the things that we could do as a school that will up that academic rigor and that content and that curriculum that these folks, and I myself and Ellen too, are really, really interested in? Really good, concrete proposals that we can implement, and we, we're all layers, we absolutely want to do that.
I think it's a shame, because it seems like just because there were conversations around areas where the school was deficient, that there's a perception by some that these other areas aren't important. They are important, but they, also, the school does them quite well, and so there isn't a lot of fixing that needed to happen, where there was clearly fixing that needed to happen with some of the high-need students.
Well, I think Ellen and Anders are both very good communicators, and if the emphasis is on just continuously communicating the balance of both, and getting the camps to see each other's sides like you're doing in individual meetings, but in every communication, just emphasizing the balance of both, and I think both camps will realize what you're saying.
Yeah. We hope that we can work really closely with these folks, and we want, and we, I just told Brianna, we want them to know the door is wide open, and we really want to, you know, but last year, we talked whole-child, let's talk academic rigor, let's come up with some really good proposals and ideas and implement them. We're all for it.
Well, it's a good sign that the arguing is about important things.
Yes. Yes.
It's not about all this intern.
Very good. Great discussion. Jill, would you like to?
Well, I have a very short report, because I honestly have not heard from any parents over the summer. Nothing has come up with the parents, which I may say is a good thing. I just wanted to add, tomorrow, the PTO is doing the appreciation breakfast and lunch for the staff, so the PTO reached out to parents, and the parents were really responsive. A lot of donations, a lot of people helping, so there'll be a lot of parents here tomorrow helping out, so.
It's always the highlight of orientation.
Lots of food. Do prizes. This and stuff. So, that'll be good tomorrow, and that's all I have.
Questions for Jill? I'd like to move on to the Executive Director report. All right. So, you don't have a copy of my report, which is now the custom.
So, we have to pay attention to it.
Yeah, so you do have, I believe, a copy of the AP five-year score report and a copy, it's called "The Future of AMSA: Matching and Measuring Our Mission to Our Core Values, A Mind-Bending Ten-Year Blueprint." So, I'm going to reference both in the, in my report. So, I'll skip over the first part. Brianna mentioned most of that about the UDL training that did not go too well yesterday. I take full responsibility for that, and the tape was a little better, and then tomorrow, tomorrow will be, tomorrow will be good. Teachers will have a lot of time to set up class, and I totally get that when I'm in schools, like I got to get into my classroom, get things set up. So, Monday, we have our sixth graders coming for orientation, the little ones, the little babies, and Tuesday, all the students are back, so we're really excited and pumped up about that. So, today, two big, today's kind of a long window, so brace yourself, take some caffeine. Two big things. So, the first big thing is our 2018 AP scores, which I have some discussion points around that, and then a while back, Rick asked about, you know, what's the vision of AMSA 10 years from now? We have core values. Where do you see AMSA being 10 years from now? So, we made effort to do that, so that's what you'll see. AMSA in 2028. So, the AP scores, so some good news to report in regard to the 2018 AP score, so if you please refer to the attached AP five-year score summary. Before we discuss the scores, just a few basic points. We really want to thank all of our students who took our AP classes. They worked really, really hard, committed themselves, dedicated themselves. AP courses are very tough, college-level, they're demanding, rigorous, challenging, and our students demonstrated the true eagle spirit, that they have one of the central attributes of our core values, excellence, and that attribute is hard work to do well in AP classes. And along with our kids who did such a great job, our fantastic AP teachers and our department chairs. And the good news that we have is a real, it's a testament to our teachers who work incredibly hard, and our fantastic department chairs who have the passion for the content and the willingness to go the extra mile and to help out all of our teachers. So, thanks to all of them, this would not happen if it wasn't for them. So, I just, I wanted to highlight, there's a whole many ways that you could break this down, I just want to call attention to four numbers. Not all the numbers you'll see there, but you'll see some of them. So, the first number I want to call attention to, and that's one that you do see there, the first number is 92.4. In 2018, the percentage of our students, of our AP students, 211 in total, who earned a score of at least a three was 92.4%. That is an improvement over last year, and last year, in 2017, the percentage of our students who earned a score of at least a three was 85.4. So, the difference between 2018 and 2017 was 7%, so it's a nice 7% bump. The second number is 91.5, and that is, 91.5 is the percentage of our AP exams, so there's the percentage of AP students, and then there's the percentage of AP exams. So, there was 351 exams that were taken last year, and of the exams that were taken, 91.5% of the exams that were taken scored a three. That meets the goal set in our accountability plan and meets the goal set in the goals for the ED. The third number, and this is a really, I think this is a really great number, the third number is 22.5, and you don't, actually, you can see that there, you can deduce that. This is like the outer reaches of my mathematical skills here. The third number is 22.5. AMSA's AP scores, in terms of the percentage of AP students who earned at least a three, are 22.5% higher than the state average. Our mean score, 4.03, is .86 higher than the state mean of 3.17. This is an improvement over the last several years. In 2017, 2016, our AP scores were 15.8% higher than the state average. The previous best, going back all through the history of AMSA in terms of our score compared to the state's score, the previous best was 2012, when AMSA's scores were 22.2% higher than the state average. So, this, in terms of the distance between us and the state, this was the highest year, which is a great testament to our students, our teachers, and our chairs. So, our AP scores are much higher than the scores of other Massachusetts schools, and it's important to note that the scores of Massachusetts schools have for the past two years, I don't think the ranking for this year's come out, but in 2017 and 2016, Massachusetts' AP scores were number one in the nation. So, to say that AMSA's AP score is 22.5% higher than the best scores in the nation is a real accomplishment, I believe. And our AP scores in 2018 were 31% higher than the global average. Last year, they were 25% higher. So, that's, the last number is 84.3. You don't see this number there. 84.3% of students in the class of 2018 took at least one AP course between grades nine and 10. This is a decline from 2017. So, in 2017, 90.4% of our students took at least one AP course. So, it's a drop of about 5%, a little more than 5%, so the 84.3% does meet the measure set in our accountability plan, which calls for 83% of all students to take at least one AP course between grades nine and 12. So, the decline, why the decline? The decline in the percentage of students in our senior class that took an AP test is small, but it's definitely something that we noted, and we don't want that trend to continue. We take pride in access. We'll talk more about that soon. Access is very important. The decline in the percentage of students that took an AP test was mirrored by a small decline in the total number of AP students, so there's percentage and then there's numbers. Again, this is the outer reaches of my math skills, so it is partly reflected, at least the decline in the number is partly reflected in the smaller class sizes. In 2018, senior class size was 102, 2017 it was 125, and 2016 it was 181. That doesn't explain the percentage, it just explains the number. So, we're very, very proud of our 2018 results, and we're looking forward to continued progress. And we want, what kind of AP program we want? We want a program that balances two things. We want a program that balances success, academic success, academic rigor, academic content, hurrah. We want scores that compare favorably to other schools in the state. We want scores that compare very favorably to other schools in the nation. We take great pride in that. And we also want access. We want to challenge students. We want to give students the opportunity to take a college-level class. We want students to achieve and to struggle and to be able to stretch themselves. We want students to achieve and to struggle and to be able to stretch themselves. We could create an AP program that could guarantee fives across the board, but we refuse to do that because we want to challenge ourselves as a school and as teachers and as staff and as administrators. So the result of a program that sometimes, that does, not sometimes, but does emphasize access, is that we have scores of two, we have scores of three, we have scores of four, not necessarily a five. But we want to emphasize a, what is often perceived as a low score in AP, perhaps a three, sometimes constitutes tremendous effort and achievement, and is absolutely essential preparation for college. So success and access, these are the keys to a strong AP program, and we believe we're on our way to doing both. Our AP scores compare remarkably well to the state national averages, and our AP program is assessable. Last year, roughly 290,000 students attended high school in Massachusetts. And of those students, according to the College Board, about 66,530 were AP students. So again, challenging my math, using those two numbers, approximately 25% of all Massachusetts high school students took an AP test. Last year at AMSA, 57% of our students who were eligible to take an AP test in 10, 11, and 12 did take an AP test. So that gives a hint of how our access compares to other schools. Be warned, this is not a precise measure, because we know, we don't know for sure how other schools determine eligibility for their AP classes, so this is a slightly imprecise measure. But I think it's fair to say that in terms of access, AMSA is far above the state average. So our scores represent progress, they represent the hard work of our students, teachers, and department chairs. And then one final thought in terms of how, you know, how do we build a strong AP program? We believe that it's, there's no magic wand that can be waved to build a strong AP program. It takes many, many things. It takes patient building of teacher experience, teaching one class one year, teaching it again the next year and the next year. It takes collaboration between teachers, strong support of department chairs, and Ellen and I are very, very supportive of our absolutely fantastic department chairs. And it requires a very creative and supportive and enriching school environment where teachers feel trusted and supported and their voice matters. It's, there's no magical wand, it just takes a strong culture, a culture of support. And we hope that we're on our way, and we think that these scores are emblematic of Second part of the report, so brace yourselves, this is the long-winded.
So are we gonna have a chance to ask questions about the APs?
Do you want to do that now, or do you want to do that at the, at the end of the report? Whatever you like.
I would do it now.
I would do it now.
So that it doesn't.
Okay. So I have two. One is, if I was reading it correctly, the gross number of exams over five years has dropped substantially, from 489 to 351.
It's because of bubble classes.
Okay. And that's.
I mean, you know, that one class had 181 students. And that covered multiple years.
It's down over five, so it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you know, that class of 2016 was taking exams in 2014 and 2015 also.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, great.
Just maybe flesh that out a little bit more, that we haven't changed the requirements, the access for an AP class, it's been fairly consistent. I know we have encouraged, we've talked to students to urge them to be careful about, you know, stocking up on numerous AP exams, and you don't need to take four AP exams or five AP exams. I remember one year, I had a student who I think took six AP exams.
Seven.
Seven. I mean, it's great, we want you to challenge yourself, but you know, in terms, you know, what's your goal? Your goal is to be challenged, your goal is to get into a top-notch university.
So here are two things. I'm hearing the bubble class and kids overdoing it historically.
And the coaching that we've provided to make sure that if you are going to do this, be aware of the balance, be aware of sacrifices that you give up, just trying to coach kids to be.
So of that delta, is it overwhelmingly because of the size of the class, or is it substantially because of the second factor?
It's probably a balance between.
So I think it's, I think it's important to try and understand that, and it merits a footnote, because it's sort of like, you look at this and it's, you know, like the distance from the other, you know, from the state and from the global, that's all, the scores are all, huh, but number of tests is down 25% over five years? So that's a footnote would be a good thing to have there.
So in terms of, like, just asterisk, the years where we considered those bubble classes.
Yeah, and where it's just, you know, kind of an accident of the numbers is one thing, whether it's the result of a deliberate policy, they ask kids to be more careful of their strengths.
The percentage, so.
How thin they stretch themselves.
Well, you can see from, sort of from the total number of AP students and the number of exams, like if you did that.
It's the same, it's 25%.
Oh, it is?
It's 25% down in 18 versus 14.
So it's exactly the same.
So 28% down in the number of exams.
It's a.
And then it's direct.
It definitely looks, you know, it's worthy of looking into a little bit more. We want a program that provides access, but we also want students to be aware that taking four AP exams may not be the wisest choice.
And if you have a number that looks funny, you want to have an explanation for it.
Yeah, right.
My second question was, kind of backing up a little bit, thinking about what AP exams really, what are they really about, what do they do for us? And I think they're an indicator that AMSA kids are doing college work and doing it successfully in a way that is credited by people who matter, at Princeton or in colleges. Having heard Dr. Giray's pitch for the electron microscope, I'm wondering how much other college-level work is being done successfully by kids at AMSA that we should try to look at in tandem with the scores?
Yeah, I mean, there's two sides to the AP. So on the one side, it is, it is a standardized test, it's a rigorous standardized test that you can compare yourself with other schools. So whatever we do at AMSA that's not AP or not MCAS or not SAT, we can't compare ourselves, right? So we could come up with great research projects, great this and that, but there's no measure that we could test ourselves with. This gives us that measure, which is important. The flip side of that is that a lot of teachers, myself included, my experience with AP is that AP, what does it do? I think fundamentally, it teaches you the importance of really working your rear end off, which is essential wherever you're going to go. Fundamentally, I think that's what it does. The negative side of that is that I think sometimes AP classes are mile-wide and an inch-deep, that you go over so much content, I think it's particularly true in humanities and history classes, biology, I think it's true too. You have to know the world of biology, you have to know the world of European history, you have to know the world of art, and everything in between. So it doesn't permit you, if you were doing a research project, to spend five months or six months or 10 months, or the whole year drilling down on one thing. And that's a price, right? Because that is equally valuable too. And, you know, truth be told, when you go off into business, you're often going to be drilling down on a few things, not doing a thousand things at the same time.
I'm not arguing that we shouldn't be tracking AP scores, but I'm saying that there's more to the picture than that. And even if we can't compare it, the fact that we can say, "Our kids are doing college work successfully," as indicated by this stuff.
Right.
But also the research projects and the, you know, if there's a substantial list of those things, right, and we should be displaying it.
Well, they're taking post-AP classes.
Yeah.
Right? There's post-AP classes here.
Yeah.
I do not think most high schools have.
Yeah, I mean, I can give two examples of that, just, my son took three, three college-level classes that are above AP. He took computer security class, he took discrete math, and he took multivariable calculus, which is.
This is college-level work at AMSA.
Yeah, no, this is great. So then this goes to Breon's point and the point about the, our folks who are concerned about academic rigor. So what are, in addition to AP, okay, we've got AP, like what else can we do to highlight? And let's do that. I mean, let's figure out, what do we want to highlight in terms of college-level work? At AMSA, there's college-level work in AP, okay, we've got that. What else? Let's do that.
There's a whole bunch of classes that APs are prerequisite.
So I have a question about ranking. So I went to the D site, and I looked at percentage of three, four, and fives, and how that changed over time in comparison to other schools in Massachusetts. The state doesn't have the latest results, so they only went to 2017. But in 2013, we were number six. 2014, we went to 25th. 2015, we went to 27th. 2016, we went to 46th. In other words, you have to scroll down far to find us with the other 46 schools above us.
Sorry, Gene, and the measure is percentage of three or better?
That is correct.
Right.
And it went up a little in 17 to 43. I, I, I find those numbers disturbing.
How is that possible when our distance from the averages is so high and so stable?
Well, here you go. It's right here, you can go on the D site, you can just look it up yourself, it's a straight line down.
Yeah, I don't think.
I believe you, I just don't understand.
Yeah, I don't think we're questioning the data. I think we're saying, if, you know, if we're looking at these numbers, I mean, are the other towns doing, what are they doing? I guess the question is.
I guess the question for the other towns.
And what are they, what are they getting from it?
What are the access? So if our access rates at AMSA, and those are not absolutely precise measures, so 57% of our students who are eligible take an AP test, does the top, does the, can you find this out, Gene? Because I would love to figure it out. How do they figure out their access? Are they as open as we are in terms of access? Do 50% of their students take an AP test? Or is it 5% of their students? I would be very interested in finding that out.
The way you described it, it sounds like it's really more ranking how many students are getting fours and fives and threes, right? Isn't it weighting, is it weighting the average of the performance so that you get more of a bump if you have more fives?
No, no, it's percentage three to fives, three, four.
Three or higher.
That's what, I just don't understand it. I don't question your numbers, Gene, but we have a stable 20-point lead on percentage of scores three or above over the last five years.
I mean, it just means that somehow the schools have been divergent, you know, diverging.
But not enough to move the average.
Right, not enough to move the average.
Not enough public sites, so everybody can just go and.
How many?
How many hundreds of schools are?
283.
Okay, that's all the schools.
283 districts.
Well, let's take into those numbers more, and let's figure, see if we can figure out what access those programs have too. I mean.
Yeah, D's doesn't list access, so I don't know.
Yeah, it's, that's a key question.
My guess is we're higher. But this is what the world looks at, so.
Yeah, the world also looks at, you know, I mean, how, at what point, you know, what's the goal, Gene? So if we're, if our scores in terms of percentage of students who earn a three is 23% higher than the state average, and the state average in Massachusetts is the highest in the country, what's our goal?
Well, our goal is defined by our mission.
Right.
Which is academic excellence.
Right, and I think that's clearly met by having more than 83% of our students who are eligible take a test, and as defined in the accountability plan and in the Ed goals, having 85% of those students score at least a three, that's been met, right? I mean, I don't, how much higher do you go and the cost of that, if you do wish to go higher? Let's say we want 100%.
And what's the benefit?
Who earn a four, and no one will earn a three. We could do that. We could have an AP goal where we say, everyone's going to earn a five, and unless, we really believe you can earn a five, you're not going to get into an AP program. That doesn't really say much about us.
I think it's an important strategic discussion to have, because we pay a price for having a lot of students in AP. Don't forget, I mean, the kids who take AP, unless you get a four or a five, it's really not worth, you don't get college credit.
I totally and fundamentally disagree with you. Totally and fundamentally. I had a student in my class several years ago who worked incredibly hard the entire year, and kept failing and failing and failing, and she failed the AP test, she got two, right? Doesn't look good in our reports, doesn't look good in the College Board, AP doesn't like it, right? Student came to me the following year, she was a senior, she came to me and she said, "Dr. Lewis, I'm sorry, I did not pass the test." And I said, "Did you learn something?" And she said, "I have really learned something really important about how difficult it is, how hard I need to work, and what I will need to do in college." To me, that was worth its weight in gold. I'll take that too any day.
I think this is worth further discussion, because again, the recent class signs is that, as you've heard from teachers who are now concerned about the higher-performing students, there's, we have limited resources, we have limited teacher capabilities, we have limited funds. We could have 100% of our students take AP courses, is that fair to those who really need to get?
Well, nobody's talking about 100%, right? But I think what the folks who are interested in academic rigor are interested in is challenging students, right? So we want an AP program that's accessible, but we want, we don't want students in an AP class who are going to fail, right? So we do try, we have discussions with our teachers and department chairs, and basically the line is kind of, does this person have a chance? Do they have a chance to succeed? And I think that's a great way to measure, do they have a chance to succeed? Can they benefit from this class?
I think a good example of how we maintain that access, at least I know in our department, is we don't make it a requirement that, oh, you have to take an honors class, an honors history class of the year before you take AP. You can get an A in CP history and still make it into AP. And I think that's a great way to balance that idea of access and saying, you know, if you're failing a CP class, then no, you're not going to get into the AP class. But if you've worked really hard, maybe you could have, you know, challenged yourself and done the honors class, no problem, but it's still, it's not like punishing you for making that decision and still proving your intelligence and your capabilities in a lot of ways. And I think the other thing is, APs aren't the only way to maintain that academic excellence and that academic rigor that we have. It's definitely, it's a measurable way to do that, but offering these, you know, really higher post-AP level electives or an elective that's really specialized on a certain type of literature or science too.
Yes, I think that is the alternative. And we should do that.
Gene, can I see the graph?
Sorry. Sorry, 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 sorry.
So I think, point here, I do, and I agree, I think we should schedule a more meaningful discussion, because any number that anybody looks at, any graph that anybody looks at that tells a five-year story about AMSA that looks like that, we need to have a statement about it. You know, and we need to understand it, and we need to credibly either explain why what we're doing is important enough.
Yeah, and let's dig into those numbers so that we really understand what those numbers mean.
Right, yeah. Because that's an.
Right, so let's not just take a graph and say, let's have discussion about the graph, let's dig into that graph. What do those numbers mean?
Yes.
And the key question behind that graph is, how do we figure out access? That's the key question.
We also need to see the 2018 numbers. Yeah, it would be helpful to, yeah, see where we are after this year, given the spike. Clearly, 2018 was trending up, so it would be very interesting to see.
So I agree with what you said a few minutes ago, let's dig in.
Yeah.
And understand that.
But honestly, too, I think if someone really wanted to look at our AP scores, I think they'd go to the College Board info, like if that's on D's. I mean, I don't, I don't know how like the US News and World Report have, what they look at, but I would think, you know, that 92.4% of our students, the percentage that got above a three or above, I would think that plays a bigger role in like, what is our ranking within our own state.
So I'd like to pause to, are we over time?
Yes, we're over time, we have two-thirds left, but I would like to capture this and possibly for the Ed Committee to take this on next.
We can look at it, we're, we have our first planning meeting next month, next week, so.
Would that be, and Gene, you see?
I really apologize, I can't turn my phone.
He just hit it.
He tried, he just.
That is funny.
Wanted.
So we are over, but do we want to keep going? We'll probably make up time, I think.
Well, I think, well, I want to definitely continue, I'm suggesting that we continue on with the other two-thirds of Andrew's report, that we.
Yeah, we don't want to lose sight of that.
I want to capture this, this AP topic, it's, it's been a very challenging and continued question that's faced us, and I think, two things, I think candidate next steps is one for the Education Committee to take a deeper dive into that, and also, Gene, if you have specific. dive into that, and also, Gene, if you have specific questions or exactly how, you know, the steps that you use to get that data or other questions, specific questions that you have from that data, if you could share them to the Board, say, for next meeting?
Sure.
I'll put an, add a AP questions for Gene next meeting. Any other action items for the AP before we move on? All right, so a couple months back, Rick asked Ellen if we could provide a vision of AMSA for what AMSA would look like a decade from now, so 2028. So Rick mentioned that we've got our core values, and we have a sense of how we're doing today, but then he was interested, you know, what might AMSA look like a decade from now? What kind of school will AMSA be in 2028? And truth be told, this was not an easy assignment. You know, because we're, we are focused and Ellen is focused, you know, it's the day-to-day stuff that comes up, and it's hard to kind of get your mind out and to like peer to the match ball and to look ahead. But it is a worthwhile endeavor. Providing such a picture can help harness our energies and our minds and help us come together around things that we could all agree on, if it's full child or academic rigor, like what can we all kind of agree on? And we need a destination, right? We need to kind of, all of us, everybody, Board members, parents, teachers, students, we need a destination, and we don't, if we don't have a destination, we don't have a North Star. We'll kind of wander and have constant fundamental disagreements, and we'll go off to an unknown place. So not an easy assignment, a worthwhile assignment, and the good news is we're not starting blind, right? So we know a few things. We know our core values. We have core values, integrity, excellence, and community. So we're going to use these values to guide us, and those were values that were produced in a very open, hopefully very open democratic way last year. And we have our mission statement, the great fantastic mission statement, the faith that all students of all backgrounds and all abilities can excel in all subjects. So with the core values, with the mission statement, we decided to paint a picture of AMSA in the year 2028 in two different ways. So the first way is by declaring, stating what we hope we don't become. We will not be this. We do not want to be this. And second, by declaring what we do want to be. So it's a kind of a picture of what to avoid and a picture of what to strive for. And to help us paint this picture, we've decided with a nod to the English Department to enlist the help of three great works of literature. F. Scott Fitzgerald's The Great Gatsby, you're probably wondering what the heck is going on here. So we're going to use F. Scott Fitzgerald's The Great Gatsby, which is read by our students in grade 11, three fantastic works of literature, George Orwell's 1984, read by our students in grade 10, and lastly, Ray Bradbury's Fahrenheit 451. Pauline is looking, how is this going to come out?
Where is he going?
Where are we going? Fahrenheit 451, which is read by our students in grade 10 over the summer. And one caveat to this, this is intended to be a portrait painted with a very, very broad brush. More accurately, as an attempt to create a frame around which we can all, everybody, add our own brushstrokes upon the canvas. For specifics, for ideas about tests and curriculum and policies, I refer you to the Future of AMSA document, which is a living, breathing document that we're constantly wanting to update and take input from, which is linked to our Accountability Plan and linked to our core values. You've already seen it, we've already discussed it. It's hasn't, it's going to continue to live and to breathe, and that's a very specific document. This is just very broad, broad brush. So 2028, three characteristics. Characteristic number one, true to our words. We want an AMSA that is more than just appearances, an AMSA that is true to our words, to our mission statement, and to our core values. An AMSA that is true to our words for our students, our staff, our parents, and our community. An AMSA that provides citizens, that produces citizens who will promote and defend the finest values of our Commonwealth and our nation. An AMSA that models integrity, our first core value. In The Great Gatsby, have we ever read The Great Gatsby? Okay.
I just read it last month again.
Oh, it's terrific. So in The Great Gatsby, F. Scott Fitzgerald presented a portrait of the 1920s, America in the 1920s, the last moment of the Gilded Age before the onset of the Great Depression and World War II. In Fitzgerald's world, the 1920s was an age of glitter, of song and dance, of fancy words and fancy actions, but of little substance. It was a very corrupted world. At the start of Chapter Three, Fitzgerald gives this description of one of the many great parties that Gatsby threw, all with the purpose of trying to attract the love of his life, Daisy. Here's the description. "The bar is in full swing and floating rounds of cocktails permeate the garden outside until the air is alive with chatter and laughter and casual innuendo and introductions forgotten on the spot and enthusiastic meetings between women who never knew the others' names." Fitzgerald writes, "In a world permeated with barriers, hatred, and lies, the aristocratic wealthy people who live in East Egg resent the newly wealthy people who live in West Egg. West Eggers and East Eggers all look down on those who labor in the Valley of Ashes that lies between them and New York City. Tom Buchanan marries the beautiful Daisy but constantly cheats on her. Daisy presents a vision of beauty, the green light that Gatsby longs for, but in the end she is more interested in her own class privilege than in any ideal of romantic love. And Gatsby himself, though he longs for something more honest, has lived a life that amounts to a great charade, changing his name, inventing his past, and engaging in illicit business, all for what he considers a just end, his pursuit of Daisy. AMSA today and AMSA in 2028 will always be a home for great works of literature like Gatsby, always and forever. The world of AMSA, however, will not be like the world of Gatsby. At AMSA, integrity will matter. Nothing else matters unless we have that. That's true today, it's true yesterday, it'll be true in 2028, so really important. Truthfulness and honesty will matter in our work as students, teachers, and administrators, and how we treat each other, how we listen, really important, how we share, and how we support each other, and how we interact with our larger community. At AMSA in 2028, integrity will not just be a logo, it will be a reality. We have to make our core values real. Integrity has to be real, not just words on a wall. At AMSA in 2028, truth will be valued, and the often difficult and laborious path to find that truth will be cherished. What is the truth? How do we get to the truth? At AMSA in 2028, we'll stand against the vision presented in George Orwell's 1984 of a society where truth is whatever leaders say it is. In 1984, the main character Winston Smith, so who here's read 1984? Winston Smith tells of a world run by one party, a party that, quote, "told you to reject the evidence of your eyes and ears." It was, Smith must muse, their final, most essential command. If the party said two plus two equals five, you would have to believe it. Like Gatsby, 1984 will always have a home at AMSA, it's a tremendous work of literature. But the world 1984 will not be the world of AMSA. It will not be the world of AMSA in 2028 because our fantastic and amazing math department will always, will not let it happen. Two plus two will always equal four. Orwell's vision will also not be AMSA in 2028 because we have learned from the mistakes of the past. We should never forget those mistakes. We have learned the importance of listening to each other. We have learned the importance of collaboration, of working together. We have learned the importance of confronting problems openly and honestly. When a group brings a problem, let's talk, let's confront, let's talk, work it out, negotiate, find what the truth is, and come together as a community and solve it. Absolutely important. So that's the first characteristic. Second characteristic, so we will be a school, and 2028 will be a school of integrity. Second characteristic is a school of excellence, a school filled with the joy of learning. This is what hardcore academic folks talk about, excellence, the joy of learning. To be a school of excellence, AMSA will be a school that prepares our students for what is coming, what is coming, and what has already arrived. And what has already arrived is the knowledge-based economy. Knowledge and the search for knowledge will define our economy, and the way schools and nations prepare students for this fact will define them, it will define us. How are we preparing students for the economy that is coming? In 2028, Americans and people around the world will be searching for new sources of energy, the next steam engine, new medicines to cure the cancer, new technologies that will make today's computers and iPhones look antiquated. So too will they be searching for how to create prosperity in an ecologically friendly way. In his great book, I don't know if anybody is familiar with the scholar, if you're not, I heartily endorse him. The scholar's name is Yuval Noah Harari. He wrote a book called Homo Sapiens and a book called Homo Deus. In his book Homo Deus, he writes, which is a future of tomorrow. He writes, "The greatest scientific discovery of the past was the discovery of ignorance. Once humans, beginning with the Scientific Revolution and the Enlightenment, realized how ignorant they were, they suddenly had a very good reason to seek knowledge, seek new knowledge, which opened up the scientific road to progress. Then generation after generation, humans sought more and more knowledge during the Industrial Revolution. Humans sought fresh sources of energy, new kinds of raw material, better machinery, and novel production methods. In the future, in 2036," Harari says, "humans, our students, are going to be doing the same in new fields of technology, new fields of endeavor, nanotechnology, genetic engineering, artificial intelligence." What was that, what will that require? Tomorrow's economy will require effort, lots and lots of research. It will require much reflection, including how to pursue knowledge and how to test knowledge, tremendous amounts of creativity, and tremendous amounts of collaboration as well. Effort, reflection, creativity, collaboration. Preparing AMSA students for that future will require that we constantly analyze what we do, what we teach, how we teach it, and how we assess what we teach. And most importantly, and I think this speaks directly to what the academically oriented folks said, most importantly, preparing our students for the future will require that we instill, foster, and promote knowledge. You can talk till you're blue in the face about skills, but skills are meaningless unless you have knowledge. Knowledge comes from teachers and a content-rich curriculum. Knowledge of ideas, knowledge of the past, knowledge of human behavior, knowledge of math and science, knowledge of language, knowledge of how societies work and function. And this requires in turn that we all embrace what some consider a relic of the past, and that is books. Books. Okay, just wait a minute. Let's go. In 2028, AMSA will be a school where books, whether it's a hard copy or a digital copy, whatever it is, books, and the ideas and the conversations we have about those books are treasured. A school where books ignite a lifetime love of learning and a lifetime quest to pursue even more knowledge, the joy of learning. In Fahrenheit 451, Ray Bradbury wrote of a dystopian world where books are burned because they produce unpleasant feelings. Beatty is the fire chief in 450, is everybody familiar with 451? Partially. So in the 451, Beatty is a fire chief, and he's responsible for starting fires, not putting out fires, and he starts fires by burning books. He tells the main character Montag that, quote, "If you don't want a man unhappy politically, don't give him two sides to a question to worry him. Give him one. Better yet, give him none. Give the people contests they win by remembering the words to more popular songs or the names of state capitals or how much corn Iowa farmed last year. Crandam full of non-combustible data, chucks so damn full of facts they feel stuffed but absolutely brilliant with information. Then they'll feel the thinking. They'll get a sense of motion without moving. This will not, this is not, and will not be AMSA. At AMSA, we will welcome new ideas. At AMSA, we will welcome challenging ideas. At AMSA, we will welcome new thoughts. We will welcome and encourage disagreement. We will welcome and encourage challenge. We will welcome and encourage discussion and experimentation, all the hallmarks, hallmarks of a scientific method." In Bradbury's 451, there were still people committed to reading, committed to books and the joy that books offer. These people of the book were so committed to learning and to knowledge that they dedicated themselves to memorizing a book of great importance so that its ideas could be preserved and so that they could avoid government persecution. One person, so in this place far away from the city, individual people would memorize books, and they wouldn't write them down because it could be caught with the actual physical copy, they would just memorize books, and so one person memorized Plato's Republic, another Gulliver's Travels, one would memorize Charles Darwin, one would memorize Confucius. And on the outskirts of city life, Montag, the main character, met one of the leaders of these book people, his name was Granger. Granger, in one of the final scenes, urges Montag, who is running away from authorities, to take faith, and Granger says to Montag, "When the war's over, someday, some year, the books can be written again, and the people will be called in one by one to recite what they know." At AMSA, we are with Granger. We will be in 2028. We are the book people. We embrace the joy and the wonder of learning. Towards the end of 451, Granger tells Montag of the inspiring words of his grandfather. His grandfather, Granger states, "Told him to stuff your eyes with wonder. Live as if you dropped dead in ten seconds. See the world, it's more fantastic than any dream made or paid for in factories. That is AMSA, the joy and the wonder of learning and the pursuit of knowledge." That is, in a nutshell, what AMSA is. I'm going to, I know I'm probably way over my time, I just want to go off on a tiny, tiny side tangent away from this. This past week, Ellen and I were shocked and awed when Lino Alvarez and Brian Baca walked into our office with an idea. They had an idea about how to solve attendance problems at our school. And it was like outside of the box, incredible idea, and they created this program, a computer program, they created scanners, they, and they walked us through this program. Now, if you have a student who does this, this is what happens. It was, it was like genius. And they did it by themselves, of themselves. We didn't ask them, we didn't pay them, and they came and they said, "Look at this, look at this idea." And Ellen and I just said, "That is AMSA, just embracing." And we said, "Why did you guys do it? It's fun. We enjoy it."
They spent a summer on it.
It's like, they spent a whole summer on it, to pursue knowledge, to pursue an idea that works and is functional and will help others. It's like, that was it. And they used their computer science skills, they used their collaboration skills. I was like, wow, what you guys did is AMSA in a nutshell. That's what we want. Last but not least, so characteristic number three, the lighthouse. So Rick loves that reference to the lighthouse. I love the reference to the lighthouse. In 2028, AMSA will be a school that models integrity. In 2028, AMSA will be a school that pursues excellence. And 2028, AMSA will be a school that fosters community, a school where we all strive to be good citizens, a school where we appreciate and celebrate diversity, where we welcome students of all backgrounds and all abilities, as is stated in our charter. AMSA in 2028 will be a lighthouse, a school built to withstand storms, disagreements, controversies, different ideas, right? That is natural, that will always happen. We will withstand those and will be stronger for it. A school that proudly stands at land's end or atop a budding cliff. A school of light, one that inspires and gives hope to the whole community and to communities we can't yet see. There at AMSA, I want to be, because that is a school of content, of rigor, of high expectations, the joy of learning, and a school that is safe and embraces my student. Over 100 years ago, historian William Pelletrou wrote this about lighthouses and lighthousekeepers. This is what he said about lighthouses and lighthousekeepers. "Among all the hosts who are called to the service of government, perhaps none is charged with duties of such moment and of such universal useless as is the lighthouse keeper. The soldiers and the statesmen protect the national honor and the person and property of the citizens, and their acts are performed in the gaze of the world. But the quiet man," and this is 100 years ago, so we will add quiet man and the quiet woman, "who trims and lights the shore of the harbor lights and watches them through the long night, stands his vigil for all humanity, asking no questions as to the nationality or purpose of him who he directs to safety. We, students, teachers, staff, parents, Board members, all of us, we're the keepers of that light. Go Eagles." So that was a very broad question.
I want to go back to high school. I didn't read these books.
Other questions or comments for Dr. Anders?
I'd say the only thing that, the key thing that I noted in the document, which I think you really hit home, is that creativity is understated in measurement in here, and how do we evaluate and encourage it? And I think that we should probably strengthen that notion in here.
Is that in the blueprint?
Yeah.
Oh, that's great.
I feel like, you know, that that could be stronger, you know, in our values and excellence.
Are you looking under excellence?
Yeah, so we talk about innovation and creativity in the middle, but very little around the outside. So how do we add to that on the outside?
How do you measure that?
Do we encourage it? How do we, you know, strengthen it?
Yeah.
Foster it, maybe? What do we, maybe that's great.
Thank you.
So I thought this was great, the document, future AMSA document and the presentation. You didn't talk about stars and lighthouses in the same sentence, that's good. So the metaphors weren't mixed. I had a little bit of trouble with these, feeling sort of like there was a layer missing is that the, between the items in the surrounding boxes and the methods to measure.
Yep.
And that I think, you know, to kind of do more to put these, the outer ring statements, something like SMART goals.
Like how do we get there?
Yeah, so that they're more, and then to try and fine tune how the measures appeal to that. And I was thinking about, you know, the point that Mike Glass was making, used to like to make several, whenever we could, is that we pick five things.
Right.
And those are the projects that we will pursue for the next year, two years, whatever.
Right.
And then we'll try and measure them with some rigor. So I thought it was great. I think the next iteration should try to be a little more concrete and map to those, the middle layer to the bottom layer.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a really good point, Chris. In this kind of first iteration, this is really in the early forms, we're trying to just get everybody's input. So we've shared this with department chairs, we've shared it with teachers. We're trying to gather as much input and kind of put a lot of things on the darkboard, so to speak, and then from that to perhaps scale it down.
Yeah, then I would, all that for the next iteration.
Right, and we're thinking in particular, since we have our charter renewal coming up, and we'll have to revisit the accountability plan, the five-year plan, we're thinking this is kind of a year-long project of how we come together collectively.
Right.
Now that we have our core values, okay, how do we measure our core values and how do we make them fit with our accountability plan at the same time?
Great, great story.
So it's kind of, it's an ongoing discussion throughout the year, so hopefully we'll make progress and whittle it down to.
So at 7:50, we should be starting section four.
My apologies.
Just give all of section three, just letting you know.
Thank you, Kristen. So we're ready to move on to chair business at this point. So for streamlining decision-making, we really didn't have a chance to discuss, we did not discuss how to govern this this month. We have implemented the timekeeper, and we will be doing a feedback on the meeting toward the end, so I would like to then move on to the ED evaluation task force for Pauli.
Sure. So there's two things. The ED evaluation reports, there are two documents in your packets, and you should have received these in Board on Track a couple of days ago. We did talk about them at the Governance Committee meeting. The printout from Board on Track with all of the scores, these are the quantitative scores that Board on Track's survey tool uses. This is all board members, as well as almost all of Dr. Lewis's direct reports did fill this out. So this is one input that the task force considered. The task force also considered goals, oh, the goals document is in there. The goals for the, annual goals for the year, and Dr. Lewis had provided annotations against that, and then also the results of the family and faculty surveys. So those were all of the inputs, so they were all very concrete, measurable things that we looked at. So I just want to summarize briefly, you know, taking that all together, the strengths and accomplishments during this year. Obviously, the reestablishment of trust in the leadership team with the entire community was very substantial, and it definitely has led the community to be hopeful for leadership stability. So that was a huge effort that is really, cannot be understated because of where we were a year ago, when Dr. Lewis stepped into this role. So as a result of that, faculty satisfaction is actually the highest it's ever been, if we've ever had measuring that, which is, again, fantastic. The collective bargaining process was extremely smooth, you know, passed unanimously. That was the third collective bargaining agreement we've entered into, and it was by far the smoothest. And then, obviously, there has been significant improvement with the high needs students and those programs, and that was so important that it did lead these to remove all of the conditions that were placed on our charter because we were out of compliance in those areas. So then in terms of looking at where, oh, I should also, one other overarching thing, the primary feedback from everyone across the board was that they loved Dr. Lewis in this role, and it's actually been outstanding. So I should just start with that, right? There was just very little feedback, actually, to find for places to improve because so much of it was, I mean, it was overwhelming, so many of these surveys, was, please just have him keep doing, you know, what he's doing. And recognizing that it takes some time to change and that this is just the beginning of a lot of processes. So that I do want to set as a stage. But also, so then we looked at, and we talked about this in governance and agreed, that there were three areas for focus or development. One, obviously, we all know this, that fundraising and a development strategy is going to be required for the school to achieve its long-term, you know, these 10-year goals, very ambitious goals that we've set out. And as part of that, it also involves a, at least for this next year, there should be a plan put together and a strategy put together for what that will be. And we would also want to look at sort of what are the long-term educational needs, and therefore, what sort of support is going to be required. The second, the second half of that is that it will be necessary to establish external relationships much more broadly, and by broadly, we're meaning really broadly, right, like at the national level, national STEM foundations, national corporations. The second aspect to focus on, Dr. Lewis is so clearly a very inclusive and collaborative person by nature, and he's able to listen and to hear people at a hub, two-way dialogue. And so this is a culture that needs to be established throughout the school. It is beginning, but it's a work in progress. And we felt that for the next year, that the reasonable goal would be to try to get that next layer of management, really exemplifying these skills as well, in both sort of the upper school and lower school on a regular basis, so that everyone's seeing it from sort of that next, you know, 15, 20 layer people who are interacting with a lot of different members of the community. And then the final piece is actually, it's like a setup for this, right? With the stability, we do have this opportunity to focus on assessing academic standards of excellence for everybody. And so thinking about how to have those conversations, and how do we continue to innovate? And how do we do so in a very data and hypothesis-driven way? That that should be a focus for the next year as well. So those were sort of the three areas. I think that's it. So that's sort of where we were on the evaluation. So I just want to report that out because the full discussion was held at governance. The second piece of it, and I don't know why they, so I'll send it around after, but there was an annotation provided of the ED's annual goals, and so we did, again, have that full discussion at the governance meeting. The goals are important because they actually are, we as a board need to vote on that because we need to vote on what we believe achievement against the goals were, because that determines his bonus for the year. So the Governance Committee discussed this in detail, and we actually wanted to recommend 100% achievement.
So I guess first, is there any discussion for the report, and then I would take entertaining motion towards?
A lot of these people work at governance.
Yeah. I was looking.
Well, I will make a motion to approve 100% achievement of goals and therefore 100% bonus for the year.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Brianna, you have to say.
So I see.
Oh, sorry.
All in favor with Brianna's abstaining?
Yeah.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Two things. One, none of this would happen without Ellen and Sarah and Leana and our whole entire team. Mike Naraki, our deans, our students are fantastic teachers, and all of you, the board, who have been incredibly supportive of everything that we've done and have been able to achieve has been the result of all of us. I firmly, absolutely, completely believe that. Sometimes it's tough. We have difficult conversations, be it about AP, but I think we're all committed to the same goal at our school, and everything that we do, we do together, and it's a team effort. It's not one person's effort. And then a second, smaller thing is, it's really helpful to have that rubric that you gave me last year, that nice rubric with four goals, or, you know, and, because, you know, Ellen and I, we take that rubric and we just, you know, slap it down and we're like, let's go. So.
Well, we'll do that again.
We're looking forward to the next iteration into going after those goals.
So I forgot to mention one thing that I had made a note that I wanted to say, which was that I do want to make very clear, right? It was so obvious to everyone that Dr. Lewis's honesty and integrity and his ability to give credit to everyone, and I think Sarah said at the Governance Committee meeting, and accountability. He's very quick to say when things are great, it's everybody, but when, you know, it happened earlier today. If there's a mistake, then it's my fault. And that's, you know, so it's just refreshing to have a leader who takes that to heart. But it is, it is everybody, right? That is, and you are leading everybody, and so it is very much a group effort.
Thank you.
So moving on next to Liz to represent the family and faculty survey results.
Okay, so this past week, we actually met with Dr. Lewis as a follow-up to the discussion we had last month at the Board of Trustees meeting. We took all of the input from that meeting, and we, we had a meeting with, with Dr. Lewis. The nice thing is, is, you know, we, we really wanted to sort of look at some actionable areas that we could bring to Dr. Lewis, and it turns out they've already been working on them. So it was nice that, you know, although we were bringing some of the areas to Dr. Lewis, he already had some answers for us and some areas that we can start to look at as we go through the year. So what we decided was that, you know, we wanted to come up with, with the two areas and focus on, on those, and just bring them to the administration, but allow the administration to determine how they're going to address the areas. So although we did the survey, we came up with, you know, we went through all the results, we didn't take it to Dr. Lewis to tell him how to take care of this. That was not our intent, and that's not what we did. So the first area of focus, based on, on the conversation we had last month, was around communications. And so we discussed the many issues highlighted, both on the family and faculty surveys, that could be improved, especially by formalizing parent-teacher administration and student communications. So Dr. Lewis was kind enough to share with us the communication protocol document, which they will be implementing with the teachers, and you can provide more details. But basically, what we talked about was, you know, maybe adding like a flow chart within this protocol document that sort of explains what the escalation should look like around communication, because a lot of times, you know, parents aren't sure who to communicate with when there's a problem. And sometimes they don't necessarily communicate with the right people in the right order. And we also talked to Jill about maybe adding this as part of the presentation that she does at the beginning of the, at the beginning of the year with the parents as well. And maybe we also come up with more of a parent-centric protocol so that they are aware of what communication should look like. And then we also talked about the need for consistency in communications, in rule and policy enforcement, and, and, you know, just within, within the school in general. And then a third topic that we talked about were parent-teacher conferences. And this kind of goes back to the communication because really, logistically speaking, having parent-teacher, meaningful parent-teacher conferences, we just, we don't even know how it would be done. There's too many students, there's too many parents, there's too many classes, there's too many teachers involved to really have a meaningful conversation. What we did talk about was the need for parents to reach out to teachers and have those, schedule those meetings as necessary, and that's really what we, you know, what we talked about in really making sure that this, this communication protocol addresses. The second focus area, interestingly enough, was about maintaining high expectations for all. So many of the comments on both surveys referred to both sides of the same coin. How do we maintain high expectations and academic rigor while allowing everyone to pursue their excellence without negative impact on developmental goals, i.e. burnout stress, et cetera? So we strongly believe that the academic rigor and the whole child balance approach are not conflicting goals and shouldn't be addressed as a trade-off. Specific approaches were discussed to address some of the specific concerns related to this topic. I do think, you know, based on, on what we talked about tonight and the update you gave, I think this is going to be a big topic of conversation for the year, and I think that, you know, the more people that we can involve in this conversation, the better, the better off we'll be. The discussion around cross-subject coordination, although it's somewhat related to the communication topic, has, you know, we talked about that. We talked about how the, the sharing of calendars and the grade level meetings specifically in the middle school are helpful, but at the end of the day, especially in high school, it gets more and more challenging to sort of get all the teachers together and, you know, coordinate calendars, because the fact of the matter is, you know, finals occur at the same time for everyone in this. There's nothing that we can do to change that. Dr. Lewis talked about the implementation of an advisory program, which includes professional development for faculty around behavior management methods. It was discussed that in many cases, there is a disproportionate use of administration's time for problem students, a perception that was validated by some of the survey comments, and the advisory program seeks to address that issue. The focus on improving special education program, the school has made a lot of progress in this area and should continue to focus on improving the program. And the commitment to high expectations is still a core part of special education. One thing, and Roger, I know you made the point the other night, it's really our job in a governance role, pointing out what, what areas we thought should be a focus as we, you know, as we move forward, but we really want to leave it up to the administration to, to sort of delve into the problem-solving of these areas. But again, we were very happy to see that a lot of the issues were already being addressed, and, you know, we were, we were aligned and on the same page in a lot of areas. So, oh, and, sorry, I got these notes from Earl. He did mention something about, the issues are already being addressed. For more details, refer to administrators in cars drinking coffee on the school's Facebook page. So, but yeah, so we did, we, we did have a good conversation. We, you know, we started to look at some of these areas. I think it's, it's going to be. I think it's going to be areas where we continue to have discussions about. The other thing is, is we are going to be working with Panorama on a pulse survey, which we will be conducting before the holidays, so we can sort of gauge with both the teachers and the parents where everybody is, you know, in hopes of trying to sort of start working some of what we heard back from these surveys. Questions, concerns?
So just to reiterate, the two major points that the survey team has identified, the survey task force has identified are...
Communication and maintaining high expectations for all.
Those are two great goals.
Yep. And it was nice, because there was a lot of similar themes, both on the parent survey and the teacher survey, so it did make it somewhat easy to come up with the ideas.
Chris?
That sounds great. And I actually, in doing it, I'm sorry I missed last month, but in doing my own review of the stuff that I had in front of me, it came out to largely the same place. I had improvements in execution of communications, the philosophical divide among the staff, which is noted here, which we've been talking about some. And there was also noted here, and I think is part of this philosophical divide among the staff, teaching style supporting all students. And that feels like it's part of the same thing. And I don't know if you've talked about getting outside help for this, because it strikes me that we spend a lot of money on a consultant just to help us make lists about everything we agreed about. And I think we could use some expert assistance in dealing with what could be some fundamental, some really difficult-to-work disagreements.
Now, Chris, are you thinking, when you say outside help, are you thinking in terms of negotiating the differences between teachers?
I think a process consultant, because you've got, you know, so this is, there's a lot here, right? There's the question of maintaining standards, and then there's kind of subtexts that could be part of that, like, "Oh, these kids don't belong here," which I have heard here anecdotally in years past. So there's lots of stuff going on and lots of stuff that people are deeply invested in and that go to like who they are and, you know, so lots of high-feeling stuff. So finding the ways to work it through takes some skill.
Yes.
And I think some consulting. When you think of that, you think, we hired a consultant, I think it was money well spent, really, to help us understand better what we agree about.
Core values, right.
So we needed help to do that, and we certainly need help to deal with these things that have a lot of, you know, a lot of energy, attention to them.
I think it'd be curious as a first step to see if we did create a committee that was academic excellence or rigor, whatever we title it, because I'd like to think we could work them out on our own. I don't know. I have faith in our faculty, but I do think there's value in a third party, too. But I think that would be a good first step to see if maybe...
And I've seen like in nonprofit matches of like that, where people go awry, it's like they get help to do the easy stuff, and then when it gets to the really tough stuff, they say, "Oh, we'll take care of this ourselves."
Yeah.
And, you know, with unhappy results.
Yeah, I definitely see what you're saying, Chris, and your last year, the help with the core values was great. I do see what Brianna's saying, too, and that there is some concern about bringing in outside folks and doing it one more time with another group and kind of exhaustion to that.
Well, I think it's probably a different kind of thing. It's not, you know, it's not, and it's like teaching, again, you'd have to talk to people what they can do for you, but teaching us, us mean you, the rules about how you engage around subjects like this, how you have a meeting like that, how you make sure people are feeling okay.
Maybe at the end of it, training for me?
Not just you, because everybody is, well, I don't know, maybe. But it's certainly, you're not going to do this whole thing.
No.
You can negotiate with 85 other people and fix it also. So, you know, maybe that is, I don't know what would be involved, but...
I think that's just in the time and money to find out. Liz was saying that's going to be one of the big nuts, too.
I think it's an interesting idea, the idea of bringing in someone from the outset. I'm not sure if I agree, but I don't, I can't articulate why. I've been trying to figure out, why do I not? And I think it's partially because in some cases that just, they kind of need to work it out. I mean, they really do need to figure out how to work it out. I think it's a different, it's primarily within the school. It's less, you know, all these other stakeholders that are part of it, because I think that we've talked about it sort of at the board level and with the leaders in the past, and the problem comes to the day-to-day, like how, what the execution and what the decisions are made. That's where the tension comes from, you know?
I'm not so sure I agree with that, but yeah.
Okay.
Because the school was in a state of almost civil war three years ago, and the management really made that a lot worse, but there's something in there, too.
Right.
Yeah, voice is important, and we've had the important whole-child voice, we had consistency in communications committee and that voice. And, you know, when we create those, Brianna and I were kind of joking, "Oh, it's another committee, a blue-ribbon panel, hurrah." But there is weight to that, because when you do create a committee, you're emphasizing it. Mike sends out email blasts, we create a video, we create documents, and it just says, "We're devoting time to this, and this matters to you, and it matters to us." So...
But spend the time, if not to hire help, and to find out what are best practices for dealing with this kind of thing. What do people who really know what they're doing do?
On the issue itself or the urgency?
I would think it's on fundamental divides among an institution or business, among factions.
But we don't even know if there really is a fundamental divide, or if there is, if there are different sides of the same coin. I guess that's what I'd say.
And I just don't think there's any downside to handling it skillfully.
Well, that's true. That's true.
Well, I think also the constant communication that you can't have one without the other. The things that you were saying earlier about you can't have one or the other, and if both sides come to agree on that through the communications that you guys so clearly give to people, then, you know, maybe there won't be the factions or divide.
Well, I'm thinking that if there's a significant, one way that I'm imagining this might be breaking out is that there is a significant number of people who say, "No, this really shouldn't be for everybody. This should be for the kids who can really make it. This is like Boston Latin West." And then there's the whole child point of view. So there could very well be, it could be a matter of balance, and to some degree it is, and then to some degree, it's a fundamental disagreement about who we are. And how much is one, how much is the other, I don't know.
I don't, I don't think it's quite that extreme. I hope it's not that extreme. I think we were, a couple of years ago, we were headed down a path that was kind of like a message that we were given, you know, like this is a place for kids who can make it. I don't think the majority of the faculty believes that. I don't think, you know, all they have to do is teach two different curriculums to not, hopefully not believe that, and just see, you know, a variety of students, because we absolutely do have a variety of students. So I don't, I don't think we're quite there.
But doesn't have to be the majority. If it's 10%.
Right. I don't even know if it's 10%.
That's a significant number that it's an issue to deal with.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's more people really value the fact that we have such an advanced curriculum. We have so many unique options and, you know, even starting in middle school, you know, it's not just about, like the post-APs we were talking about earlier. It's, I mean, it's really everywhere and at every level. So I think people just want to make sure that that's preserved, and I think they like that it's an option. They understand it's not the option for everyone. We're not going to have 100% of kids taking APs or, you know, taking these really unique electives, or even taking all honors classes, but that we can offer something that makes it really unique and that we can find a place for those students who might not be on that track, too.
And that's a much better place to be than the one I described.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So can I make a suggestion here? I think that there could be two, I'm looking toward suggestions for next step. Clearly, there is, the administration needs to grab a hold, take both the communication and the pursuit of excellence and report back to us as to what steps are being taken. I think in addition, the governance committee can take a look at the board-level actions. I think we talked about a couple of them that we identified as far as communication that we, the governance committee can take a look at this all from a board perspective and see what can we do as a board to particularly communication-focused? And are there other ideas beyond those two? Or first, do those ideas make sense as far as next steps? And are there other ideas that people have that we can incrementally improve on either of those goals? And the task force also had signed up to help create the pulse survey as well.
Yes, and we actually will be meeting with Panorama in the near future.
So that is faculty and survey results. Governance, you've heard about two-thirds of the governance report already. There are two things that I wanted to go over, speaking as governance chair. The first, we have the ideal board calendar. It's documented in your folder. We reviewed this, I think, most recently about April, and this is, the thought of this is to give a framework for a yearly schedule for the board.
So what changed?
I don't, I think we just made a point of emphasis that we would have quarterly board check-ins against our SMART goals. And let's see, and the latest thing I had done is we had both March and April as the place to kick off the survey, and we decided that that would be April. But so this, this has not changed much since the last time you've seen it, but some people such as Kristen had not seen it.
I guess we forgot to do the board self-assessment, huh? At the board annual meeting. We should probably do that, because it's been about a year and a half.
Okay. Is that on?
It's on June?
Okay, it's on, it's in June.
Well, because July, August says report on self-assessment results, but June was to do the self-assessment? You know, I...
I think it was later, because I came on in June, or I think I came in July 1st, and I took it, I felt like it was right at the beginning of the school year.
More like September, October.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, it feels odd to me that that was June.
Yeah, I know, I can't remember.
Because it seems more likely that should be a precursor to the, to the January meeting.
Well, we used to always do it at the January meeting, and then Board on Track said we really should do it at the, you know, sort of the annual meeting, like the whole, at the year sort of, but it doesn't quite make sense to me to do it in June, because in June is sort of where we're winding up, doing a lot of the ED evaluation, you know, the survey results and all that. And it feels like we should be doing it a little bit earlier than that, or later. It should help us figure out, you know, what do we need to add for board members?
Maybe April, sort of in line with the surveys?
Yeah, it's more like around then, because that's when we can figure out what we need for board members for the following year.
Yeah. So I like that, I like the idea of moving the board self-assessment to April, and then we can report on it even in May.
Yeah, because then we can start talking about...
Then that leads us into...
Leads us into the year, into the next year, yeah.
Other discussion?
I know we used to do it in January. We really did it.
Yeah, we had previously done it in November, December, and reported in January, but that, I think that added even more content to a packed meeting.
That was a problem. It made the, it diluted the January meeting.
Yeah. I'd like to keep it out of there.
I wonder if we want to think about putting in annual reports for the, from the committees? I mean, some committees do have kind of spots in the calendar. Governance is responsible for certain things at certain times, but if there were a, you know, I'm just trying to think like the development committee, if I, it would be...
Why don't you do it?
Well, that's a good question, but I just, I know that if I was, if I had to have it done by a certain date, it would change the way you go about the work of the committee instead of having constantly rolling going forward, and you try and informally say, "Well, you know, like I think of June as the end of the year as far as development is concerned." But it's not like I'm working towards an annual report and backing up my work from there.
Well, maybe just, maybe it's just specific to development, because I think, because the finance is sort of tied on the budget.
Yeah, right.
Governance is sort of sprinkled throughout, so what would you like to propose for, when would you like to give us a development report?
The committee historically, or not historically, like the last two years, two or three years, has been doing a report every June, but they didn't do that before. It just happens to be the last couple of years that has been the case.
It does coincide nicely with the end of the year with how much money was received. When we did the budget wrap-up for the last month, we had, I know you weren't here, right? But we did an in-depth where we were and where we ended the year financially, so maybe that would be a nice...
Sort of do it July.
Parallel.
Like at the, when we have the year-end numbers.
The year-end numbers, how successful were the goals, where did we get in, what do we have to do it for to next year?
Yeah, so I think that meeting and the meeting after, so we did July, September.
Or September, yeah.
I was thinking more, I was thinking more June, June or July.
Except they don't have their final numbers.
But you're, by the end of June, we typically have, I mean, our annual giving campaign normally runs through April to early May. I mean, there's always some trailing donation, but we typically, when does the annual giving end?
That's actually true.
I mean, the active campaign, clearly we'll continue to accept donations any moment.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
But the active campaign normally ends a little bit after April break, and I think it's more exciting to share it in June than...
And we have five figures more money than we thought we did. We thought we knew a little about it, so the delta was substantial.
So I can think of two options, either that you, the development committee can discuss and come back with a proposal as to when you would like to present, or if you'd like to make a...
Yeah, let's make a proposal.
Yeah, because June only is presenting the results of the annual giving campaign, but not really kind of like all the other things.
Look at the whole picture.
Yeah.
You're just trying to get it done, and then it's like...
Yeah, exactly, not really sort of bigger picture, and you really want to present the big picture, so maybe it is more of a September.
Yeah, so I think...
Let's come back to the work.
Yeah, I want to go back.
And education committee, can I task you with the same ideas? Would you like to do a yearly report?
Yeah, I mean, I think the June, the June makes more sense, I think, just because of the calendar.
Yeah.
Yeah, because of the school year calendar.
Would you like to sign up at this point, or do you wish to discuss?
Yeah, no, I think that's fine. I think that having it last year, it was good that we were working towards a goal, so...
And Ed Sweeney has done that for the last, like, three years.
All right. Other suggestions? I mean, this is a live document, there's...
No, unfortunately, every time I look at it, I change my mind, but I'll still...
We'll keep tweaking it, and hopefully it doesn't, that's why I try to keep a history on the end of it, so we know what we changed. But I'd like to, at this point, take a, well, as governance chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the current version with two changes. One, in regards to the, when to conduct the bot self-assessment, and to add the education committee report in June.
Second.
Yeah, Chris is, Roger leading, Chris is second. All in favor?
So Roger, you were the motion.
I was making the motion. All approved?
Yeah.
All in favor? Second one was, we discussed the board trustees recruiting our desired profile. We've had a couple... committee was that we had five needs, which is very similar to what we had last year. The difference is that we added a number five down here, which was change management or management effectiveness, person, person with that skill set. And I think other than that, we had kept pretty much the same summary as last year.
Except we pulled development to the top priority, and we pulled the willingness to pull, leverage personal networks to the top priority.
Yes. Yes, we, we had swapped development and college/university faculty as one and two, and, and we really focused on willingness to leverage personal networks for Ams's benefit. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes. I'd also like to announce that Brianna has accepted a, remember the recruiting task force, really to, to help us bring our educational expertise through Boston College and her network to help bring us more people with education experience to our board. Thank you for volunteering.
You're welcome.
And at that, I'd like to conclude the governance report.
Quick update, because we still haven't met for this year. We actually are meeting next Thursday, so I've just been going back and forth with Holly Johnson about adding someone from National Honor Society, and we looked at possibly making it a little broader, because she did say there are a number of students who qualify for National Honor Society but can't serve in National Honor Society because of other commitments, so this might be an opportunity for that pool of people. So we'll see. I invited her to our meeting next Thursday, so we can discuss a little further, and I sent her, you know, a snapshot of what we're looking for in terms of a student joining the education committee. So that's about it, so we'll, we'll have our first meeting next week.
Questions, Liz? Thank you, Liz.
Thanks.
Chris, development?
In, in the interest of helping us get back on schedule. So the administration has been interviewing consultants, and as soon as we hear the report back from them, we'll decide on next steps, so we're kind of waiting on those conversations and the results.
Great. And what timeframe are you expecting results?
We haven't connected, where's Ellen?
Yeah, Ellen wanted to talk to you, Chris, get your advice, so.
As soon as Ellen and I talk to each other.
You've met, you've talked a lot, did you meet with Rick? Met with Rick and Chuck.
Okay, so I think-
Very good conversation, but we, and they're both terrific, but we'd like your thoughts.
So there will be some kind of report back in?
For a report next month.
Absolutely.
Final thing, I'd like, I'd like to spend a couple minutes, how am I doing in timekeeper-wise?
Well, it's 8:30, so we're 25 minutes past, uh, sorry, we're, we just saved 10 minutes, so we're 15 minutes past, which is not bad, right?
So I'd like to first do a call for agenda items for next month. Currently, I, the only thing I've added so far is I asked for Jean to speak about AP numbers.
We, we will approve ED goals.
ED goals.
So that needs to go into discussion at governance committee.
And governance as well as-
So governance will propose.
All right. And so that's agenda call. Brief thoughts on meeting pluses, minuses, things we could do better. I'll just, in interest of time, I'm just going to go, everyone gets one comment, and we'll, as far as thoughts on the meeting, just go.
I need to be more cognizant of time. Need to be more cognizant of time.
Honestly, I think it was good discussion tonight. I think we need to have more, you know, robust discussions like we had this evening.
I was going to say pretty much the same thing, and I can't think of anything more unique to add to it, so, yeah, I'll just second that.
Yeah, I think the length of the conversation that we had was meaningful, so if that section does go over time, I mean, it's a conversation that we needed to have, and we ended up making up some time, but I don't see any problem with the meeting tonight at all.
Typically, meetings start, you know, you know what you're voting on, so there should be a list of what is it that we're expected to think about and vote on, right? So that should be, I think that should be upfront, so I know what's going on. And then, which, Rick, we're here because he's concerned about discussions about strategic items. We don't really spend enough time on strategic items. I mean, listen, all, all things are interesting, but there are like critically deep, important issues which we just don't have time for, because we discuss all this other stuff. Not that it's unimportant, but it may, may be better put in meetings, all right, and just report, report it out in terms of discussion. I don't know, I'd like to see more just strategic discussion, and then, you know, what do we need to vote on, and let's talk about serious stuff.
Very good. Kristen?
I'm still learning, and I don't have a lot of other meetings from this group, but I think it is important to get to the business and get to the strategic items as much as possible, or maybe dedicate certain meetings to have those discussions in advance, so that we know when we're going to have time for particular topics, so people can be prepared and not be ad hoc. I think that would be important, but also useful.
Thank you.
Chris? Much like what Jean said, I think, it was, I think the discussion was important, I think it was strategic, that it went over. We need a lot more time for it, and I think we need to be able to predict a little better what's going to require a lot of time, and then maybe, you know, think about, if it's, if it's going to require time, we don't have it, then let's stop and put it on the agenda and give it half an hour next time.
Yeah.
You know, rather than just doing what you need to do and then trying to make it up later.
Right. Yeah, I mean, or, Pauline?
So this is probably the first meeting in a while where I wasn't creating the agenda or very heavily involved, right, in creating the agenda, and therefore knew what was going on, and so one thing that I did find was that I, it's much to what Jean was saying, I didn't exactly know what the meeting was going to be about, and what the homework was, and what we should prepare for. So, yeah, I also do think getting that out earlier would be helpful.
Yeah, I think, I think the meeting went well. Thank you, Kristen, for being the timer. I think that the timer role has worked.
Yeah, it has.
I think we do need to, personally, think, sort of building on what Chris said, I think we do need to build in a mechanism to say, hey, this is a really great discussion, let's keep it going. Is there a method that we can just make a motion to the chair to say, you know, let's motion to extend discussion or something, so we can apply, keep the energy going and have a discussion when we're in the midst of something, and acknowledge that. So, thank you. That was a great, I think I'll, we'll ask Rick to do something like this.
This is a movement in the right direction.
So at this point, like to make a motion to, entertain a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation strategies and purchase and lease of real property, because discussion in open session would be detrimental to our positions.
So moved.
Second, please. So we have Liz and Chris, and this is the roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, and we'll be inviting both Lisa and Ellen to join us in executive session.
And Anders.
And Anders. And like to take a motion to close the open session of this meeting. Or do we need, you don't need to vote?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
Yay.